I call the January 21st, 2020. Blue Springs City Council Meeting in order. If you would stand for me, observe a moment of silence and I will lead you into the legislative allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I want to welcome you in attendance, as well as those that might watch this meeting on YouTube later. Next, we have the consent agenda unless there's items that need to be pulled, I accept a motion for approval.
Your second.
Your second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Kayler.
Aye.
Levisay.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next, we have a public hearing on the amended plan unit development concept plan for Villas North at Chapman Farms.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. Council information form dated January 14, 2020, with the following attachments: staff report, site location maps, flat map, concept plan drawings, application with attachments, a public hearing ad, and the examiner on December 28, 2019, 185-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, a copy of letter sent to said property owners, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, and 2014 comprehensive plan by reference, and bill number 4723 approving the amended plan. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Okay, thank you. Madam, on behalf of the city?
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. Before you this evening is a PUD concept plan, request for the development of a 21-lot single-family subdivision known as the Villas at Chapman Farms. The proposed 3.84-acre site is located south of the intersection of Southwest Mason School Road and Southwest Second Street. Development is zoned SF7 PUD RO, which is single-family with a planned unit development and restricted overlay, and is part of the overall Chapman Farms PUD, which was first approved in 2004. In 2009, the subject property was split from the remaining 16 acres to the east, and that property was purchased by the Lee Summit School District. As part of that process, the previous PUD concept plan on the property was removed, and a new PUD concept plan is required to be established for this property prior to development. Since the Chapman Farms PUD concept plan was approved under the 1996 UDC, and a rezoning is not required, and the proposed development is being reviewed under those 1996 requirements. The PUD concept plan does include 21 lots and two common open space tracts. Access to the site is provided through the Southwest Second Street extension, which will connect to Southwest Mason School Road and connect to the Villas of Chapman Farms to the south that is already developed. The Southwest Second Street will also align to the Greenbrier subdivision on the north side of Southwest Mason School Road. The street will be dealt as a collector's street with a 60-foot right-of-way and five-foot sidewalks on both sides. As part of the PUD, minimum lot and development standards must be established for the property. Through the PUD, the applicant is requesting to reduce the minimum lot size and minimum lot width. The main reason for these reductions is driven by the narrowness of the site with a 60-foot right-of-way running through the center of it. The minimum lot size is proposed to be reduced from 7,200 square feet to 4,424 square feet, and lot width reduced from 65 to 50 feet. The applicant is not requesting to reduce any setbacks or other development standards for individual lots. It should also be noted the property is owned by the Land Bank of Blue Springs, and per a letter provided by the applicant, the applicant will need to remove approximately $200,000 worth of fill and debris from the property to make it developable. Per the applicant, the requested reduction in lot sizes and lot sizes and widths will make the development financially feasible. Landscape buffers are only required on the west property line adjacent to general business owning district, where a 25-foot landscape buffer would typically be required. However, a full 25-foot landscape buffer would further reduce the lot depths and lot sizes, and therefore, the applicant is requesting to reduce the required buffer from 25 feet to 10 feet. This is consistent with the 10-foot landscape buffer to the south in the Villas of Chapman Farms. All other landscaping and street trees will be reviewed with the PUD final plan. Under the Chapman Farms PUD, the parent lot of this property was required a minimum 15% open space. The development has provided 16.93% open space, meeting and exceeding that minimum requirement. Due to the small size of development, the applicant is proposing landscaping and a park bench and extra as their open space amenity. The applicant has provided conceptual front elevations for single-family homes, which are similar to the homes recently built and under construction in the Villas of Chapman Farms to the south. Most homes are, the homes are two-story with two-car front-loaded garages in the modern farmhouse or craftsman styles. The proposed minimum floor area classification for all lots is 1,400 square feet, which matches the 1,400 square feet minimum to the south of the Villas of Chapman Farms, as there are no other single-family residential subdivisions that are contiguous with the property. Staff did review the proposed development under the PUD concept plan review criteria, which is located on pages six and seven of the staff report, and staff does believe the requested modifications to the minimum lot size, lot widths, and west landscape buffer are warranted due to the unique shape of the property and the limited potential lots, lot depths due to the right-of-way through the center of the property. The proposed development does provide a housing product that utilizes smaller lots, while still meeting the standard setbacks and accommodating housing styles and sizes that are comparable to adjacent subdivisions. Development is also consistent with the goals and objectives of the 2014 Conference of Plan and the S1 Area Plan, which designates the property as a mixed-density neighborhood in which the development does fit within that definition. The Planning Commission held a public hearing for the PUD concept plan on January 13th, and no one spoke in favor or in opposition to the request. Planning Commission recommended unanimous approval of the PUD concept plan, and they also approved a preliminary plat for the development. Staff does recommend approval of the PUD concept plan with eight conditions, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions, Madam? Amendment to counsel? Seeing none, thank you. Madam, is the applicant here and wish to come up this morning in and speak?
He's always worried about giving this case to the truth. John Broker, 27300 East Pink Hill Road, Independence, Missouri.
Okay, flow is yours.
All right. Just to kind of reiterate what he said with the dirt and everything that's on the property, it is rather expensive to develop this piece. The collector's street also comes into that, where we are also being required to offset the street to line up to the street across the road, trying to get a smaller product kind of cohesively with the neighborhood that it's going to be right up against, at a price point that hopefully works.
Yeah, I do have a question for you. One of the things I hear, one of the reasons we lose people from Blue Springs, has been long-term residents going to Lee Summit and even Independence because they're looking for villas. Now, is this maintenance-free?
This will not be maintenance-free.
Uh-oh. They're looking for villas that are maintenance-free?
And these, the lot sizes, the depth, doesn't really give us the footprint ability to do a ranch-style home, which is what most villas would typically be.
Okay.
But I've been involved with a lot of the smaller homes downtown Blue Springs. I know that there's a need for homes that are not so expensive and also have small yards. We've sold these rather well because people don't want to take care of a big yard, but they still want to own their own home.
All right. Anybody else? Councilman Fowler, then we'll go to Councilman Kayler, and then about it down here.
Yeah, you brought up the dirt. So, have you already purchased this property, or are you purchasing it contingent upon the approval of this, or?
Yeah, it's a land bank property, so this has to be approved before we can close on it and that dirt is...
So, it's not, so the $200,000 for the dirt removal, that's, for some reason, I assume that'd be in the price of the land, but?
No. The city...
We're charging you extra for it, huh?
Yeah.
We got the chair of the land bank.
So, Councilmember Fowler, and I will, can defer to our Public Works Director, Chris Sandy, on this, but there, if you have driven by this property, there is a large mound of dirt that has trees growing out of it, also has concrete debris that has been there, and this particular property, before it became a land bank property, was used basically as a dumping ground for other development that was occurring in the area. And so, I believe the current price that we have here is $50,000, and we have tried for at least three years to clean up this property, to give the dirt away, to give the fill away, and we've been unsuccessful at achieving that. And with the proposal that Mr. Broker has before you tonight, he would assume that liability.
Councilman Kayler?
I have several. So, the reasoning for the price you want in the 21 lots, and that's what you think is feasible, is because of the mound itself, is that correct?
The cost of removing it is a lot of it, yes.
Correct, okay. And where are the, if I can ask this question, whereabouts, how far a distance are we going moving with the dirt and rocking and stuff?
I honestly don't know. We got two bids on it, so I don't know their plan for it.
Okay. Have we looked at somewhere close in the vicinity to be dumping?
We did actually speak to Parks and Rec because they own ground close by. There was, that was not an option, and everybody else we've talked to, Kissah Construction, when they were doing Blue Springs South, Chris can speak to this a lot better than I can probably, there's been multiple people contacted that we thought needed dirt, and nobody's taken it or shown any interest in it.
So, if there was a way that, if this item wasn't in there, and I guess, Eric, Mr. Johnson, you could help me out here, if that dirt mound wasn't in there now, we'd have had a chance to get rid of it prior to now, is that correct? Or there'd be a good chance that it could go if it didn't have that mound?
Good chance, but that isn't the case today.
Okay, all right. And then, you need to have the 21 lots in order to accommodate the price of the $200,250 for removing that?
Correct.
So, if we didn't have the mound, would you entertain the idea of going down from the 21, going down to 18 lots? Reason I'm asking, the lots to the south is 72 and 1/2 feet wide, and you're going to 50 feet wide, and I know your, the setbacks are going to be the same as eight, but 22 feet is a big difference from just 25 feet south of where your last lot is. So, I'm just curious, if that was something that you could be entertained with, or if that would happen, would you go to the 18-foot lot to make it a 65-foot lot compared to the 50-foot lot?
If there was no cost and the dirt was gone and we got a bare piece of ground, I would say we probably would. But we've, as said, I mean, we've tried, I believe we've got our first bid and started working on this in July or August of 17.
And I get where you're coming from, I'm just, I'm having trouble dealing with having a subdivision in between two subdivisions where one on the south side's 22 feet and 1/2 wider lots than it is, than it is that you're wanting to put in with 50-foot lots. And I'm just trying to figure out some type of option that would help refrain it, but if, right now, with that being said, we're stoned on going to 21 feet, and that's the way?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else seeing none, thank you for your testimony. We'll go to the public. Is there anyone who knows what it's like speaking? Support of. Support of. Opposition to. Opposition to. Close this public hearing. Anyone like to introduce bill number 4723?
I'll introduce, Your Honor. First reading of bill number 4723, an ordinance approving the amended planned unit development concept plan for Villas North at Chapman Farms.
Your Honor, move the bill to be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
And a discussion?
Yes, Your Honor.
I go to you, and then we'll go to Councilmember Fowler.
As I look at this piece of property, and I see that this, you've got commercial on one side, you've got a school district piece of property that, who knows when that's going to be developed? So, I understand that this is a landlocked piece of property, there's no, there's really little else you can go. I do have some concerns about the size of the lots. You know, we would like to be a little more consistent with the subdivision to the south. So, I have some real concerns with the lot size. I have no problem with the 1,400 square foot minimum, that's what we have to the south.
Councilman Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor. Somewhat similar feedback, the lot size going from 7,200 minimum square feet to less than five is a concern. The landscape buffering, you know, reducing that as well. I not only talk about it from the south subdivision, I talk about it precisely north on Mason School Road, because about three years ago, Councilmember Culpepper and I were sitting in Homes Association meetings down there with a development going into the east of them. Ultimately, the council did support the citizens and voted that down, however, due to some legal issues, the citizens ultimately didn't get what they want. So, I have a tough time going back to this piece of property and lowering the standards once again to an area that we let them down before. So, that's kind of where I'm at.
Anyone else? Well, I guess the thing that I would think about is, in addition to things you said, but on the flip side of it, it's land bank property that the city is having to retire that bond on, where the whole city is paying for it. And if we sell this property, it goes on the tax rolls, and we're no longer subject to trying to retire this bond for the NID.
But, Your Honor, if I may, I don't want to make a decision based on the fact that it's land bank property, because my decision needs to be based upon whether this, whether I feel like this is a good project for this piece of land, whether it be currently owned by the land bank or Joe Blow down the street. To me, it doesn't make any difference.
Well, I hear what you're saying, but also, I think you've heard very clearly from everybody, with all that dirt on there, it'll probably be sitting there forever. Nobody's going to develop it because of the cost of moving that dirt as well, so. So, you've got a lot to think about, and each one, if you can make the decision what you want to do about it. Okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
We'll roll call it.
Okay. Councilmember Levisay?
Aye.
Fowler?
No.
Erickson?
No.
Edmondson?
No.
Culpepper?
No.
Kayler?
No.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Motion fails with a vote of five to two.
Okay. We'll move on.
Before you move on, so... I'll need feedback from the city council, if, because the cost to remove the dirt, if you want to have a development that has bigger lots for the future, the land bank owns this property, and there will, the dirt will need to be removed. And there is not $250,000 allocated in the budget currently to do that, so that will be something we'll need to discuss in the future.
You're in, others. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the next public hearing, the rezoning and amended plan residential overlay concept plan for Eagles Ridge PRO Commercial.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. Council information form dated January 14, 2020, with the following attachments: staff report with attachments, applications with attachments, affidavit of publication and the examiner on December 28, 2019, 185-foot notification maps, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, copy of letters sent to said property owners, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference, bill number 2724 approving the rezoning, bill number 2725 approving the amended plan. This is all we have to offer for the record.
All right. Nathan, you up?
Thank you, Mayor Ross, and councilmembers. Before you today, the applicant, Tony Ward, on behalf of the property owner, Blue Springs Safety Storage South, is requesting the approval of two applications, a rezoning and an amended PRO concept plan for the Eagles Ridge development. The rezoning, as shown in this map here, is a request to rezone a 1.22-acre property from general business planned residential overlay, GB PRO, to two-family planned residential overlay, or TF PRO. This property is located in the southeast corner of Southwest Seven Highway and Southwest Eagles Ridge Drive. The pocket park use is what is proposed, and other accessory to residential develop, or other uses accessory to residential developments are not allowed in the underlying non-residential GB, general business PRO zoning district. Thus, a rezoning is necessary to allow the property to be utilized as open space as proposed for the Eagles Ridge residential development. Staff believes this request meets all the criteria for a rezoning as outlined in the staff packet provided today. The second request is for the PRO concept plan amendment two, and that is located in the same spot, just also including the property just to the south of the rezoning, since it's all one property currently as platted. This is a request to amend the existing PRO concept plan for the Eagles Ridge development, specifically encompassing the 3.8-acre property originally platted as tract two of Eagles Ridge PRO, first plat. Approval of the amended PRO concept plan is necessary to change the proposed use from the existing PRO, which was proposed to be a restaurant, to the proposed open space as shown today for the two-family development. Staff believes this also meets the criteria for the PRO concept plan as outlined in the packet. On January 13th, Planning Commission did approve the, or made a motion to approve the rezoning, and it failed with a four-to-four tie vote. The Planning Commission made a motion to approve the concept plan, and it passed with a five-to-three vote. In response to the concerns raised by Planning Commission about the TF PRO zoning district and the concept plan opening up a door to allow duplexes along Seven Highway in the future, staff does have a couple comments. First, this concept plan is shown on the plan before you today. Any proposal that includes duplexes along Seven Highway would constitute a significant change from this plan shown. Thus, this would require an amendment to the PRO concept plan, which is the process we're going through today. Thus, a public notice and a public hearing similar as now would be required before any changes, like changing that to duplex would occur. Secondly, staff did add language to the proposed ordinance for the PRO concept plan that clarifies the property is restricted to the development as a residential amenity. Any change from this use will constitute a violation of the proposed ordinance. Again, a change of this magnitude would require the same process we're going through today and an amendment to the ordinance. Overall, staff does recommend approval of the rezoning, the subject property from GB PRO to TF PRO, and recommends approval of the amended PRO concept plan for the proposed clubhouse and pool for the Eagles Ridge two-family development with five conditions. According to the Unified Development Code, both the rezoning and the PRO concept plan must be approved to allow the proposed use on the property. Denial of either application based on UDC will not allow the developer to move forward with the community clubhouse and pool as proposed. I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions, Nathan? Seeing none, thank you.
Your Honor, I guess, I think you kind of mentioned there, I just want to make sure I'm really clear on this point, that, you know, the Planning Commission, it sounds like four-four tie, so, but they had concerns relative to, hey, if we change this zoning, somebody may put in two-family housing versus, you know, the clubhouse and the amenity and everything like that, but you strengthen up the language and the ordinance to where we believe that should not be a concern tonight.
The ordinance is very clear that it is restricted to only residential amenity at this location.
That's slightly different than what the Planning Commission heard.
Correct.
Okay, good. Thank you. I just want to make sure I was clear on that.
Any other questions, Nathan? Not thank you, Nathan, we'll go. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Yes, would you come up and be sworn in?
He's always worried about giving this case to the truth. I do. Name's Brian Ron, R-A-H-N, 1,000 Northwest High Point Drive, Lee Summit, Missouri.
Okay.
Good evening. What we're looking at here is, you know, we're looking at putting a clubhouse and pool with additional amenities, fitness, community room, you know, a lot of things that we don't have there right now for the residents on the two-family side. We do have a pool, we have a nice pool and everything for the single-family side, but we don't on the two-family side. This project here, approximately 2,500-square-foot clubhouse, you know, at that location, we explored a lot of different options with staff to try to come up with what would be best to fit everything and make it work, not just to get something built, but also make it work with the entire community. We've been in touch with, you know, the homeowner association in the area, you know, let them know what we're doing. We do have commercial ground right there, and of course, that's why we're looking at zoning. You know, we felt that this was a good buffer between, you know, the commercial ground and the single-family homes that we have there. The project itself is going to be a very nice clubhouse. You know, when we talked with planning and zoning, you know, they brought up some things there, you know, that we just don't have some of these things right there. So, that was, you know, encouraging for what we wanted to do. So, basically, in working with staff, this is, you know, the solution that we came up with and we're hoping for your support as well.
That's true.
Councilmember Fowler?
The, going back with a clubhouse, an amenity, that sounds like that's going to help out the value and the draw for your two-family homes over there. Normally, when we talk about amenities, though, they normally are built at the time of the subdivision, this is well after it. This is great, but I think it's great to have this going on now. Any reason why it's been so far behind the project, or what was the impetus to get this going? It's very unusual.
There's a couple things. One, you know, we're, we currently just put another phase in, we're about to put an additional phase in, you know, which all has been approved, and, you know, so we're expanding out there. We wanted to add that amenity. We added the pool, you know, last year on the other side. So, you know, these are things that we're trying to bring in, you know, and right now, you know, it seems like the best location that we could do that. In addition, we're also, you know, working with, you know, investment and management company there on this duplex project, which they have a representative here this evening as well, you know, who is supporting, I mean, this is their investment, you know, they're supporting this, and just exactly what you said, you know, we're bringing value, you know, not just, you know, you want to have a community, not just another duplex. You know, this actually makes that a community out there.
Yep, yep, good, thanks.
Councilman Levisay?
I seem to remember with the Eagles Ridge development, isn't there two homeowner associations? There are one for the single-family homes, and then one for the duplexes as well for the multifamily homes?
That's correct.
Okay. And have you checked with the Single Family Home Owners Association as well, and they're aware of this, and so far, haven't had any complaints?
Yes, that's actually what I meant when I said I've been in touch with the homeowner association, you know, because you do have some single-family homes right there, and also, everybody has a lot of concerns because there's commercial ground out there, you know, what's going to happen with commercial and things like that?
This is the deep recesses of my mind, but I feel like when that, the amenity for the single-family pool was put in, wasn't there concerns about letting the two-family residents use that pool? Was there restriction on that as well?
Yeah, there is a restriction.
Because I thought there was some promise of building this pool sometime in the future.
Yeah, there is a restriction on the pool that we put in last year, that it is only for the single-family residents, and we, you know, deeded that to the homeowner association after it was completed, and, you know, they monitor that, and there's not been any problems.
This is kind of that fulfillment of providing that same amenity to the other homeowner association?
Correct.
Do you own, are those rentals, most of the two-family, or are they mostly owned by a resident?
Those are, they're all rentals.
Do you control the homeowner association, is what I'm asking?
Basically, yes, with the investment company that's here this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Excuse me, I'd like, the property to the north of the sketch where the pool goes, is there enough green space there to allow for any kind of activity for like the young kids? kids or is that just green space for looks? I'm not, I can't read the dimensions very well. No, on the very north side of where your pool is on the sketch, not north of the street, but where that arrow is and south to the pool.
Okay, so yes, we, we have been looking at, you know, like possibility of a playground feature in addition to just the pool. We're talking about outdoor cooking features, possibly playground features, you know, so yeah, we're, we're looking at all of, all of that. We have the ground exactly where he's pointing right now is where we've been looking at some, you know, amenities and primarily the playground and, you know, just the play structure has been discussed and like I said, more with the building itself. It's got, you know, outdoor cooking, it has a dog wash currently in the plan. So yeah, it's not just a building and a pool, you know, we're tying in other features to, you know, the entire project.
Thank you.
Councilmember Edmondson.
And you mentioned the restrictions on the other pool or Chris did and, and that prompted my question is, are there restrictions on this one that it's only used for the multifamily or is it going to be opened up for the whole area?
In working with the, the management investment company, we've discussed these different options because there's additional amenities. You have fitness, you have a community room, you know, these things and while there likely would be, you know, for non-residents of that HOA, there would be a cost involved, they would like to make those amenities available on a subscription basis, like for example, fitness, because there is no fitness down south, you know, and that's something else that planning and zoning brought up.
So that could also help ease up on the financial burden on the multifamily's HOA as far as maintenance and?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You all right there?
I'm good.
Oh, go, excuse me.
I'm good.
Maybe I heard this wrong, but are you saying that this could in the future be a non-residential fitness center?
No, what we were saying is that, like for example, if the single-family homes wanted to, somebody over there wanted to use the community room and rent it for an event that they have or something like that, those are options that we're exploring.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
We'll go to the public. Is there anyone who wants to like speak in support of? Support of? Opposition two? Opposition two? Close this public hearing. We would like to introduce bill number 4724.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of bill number 4724, an ordinance rezoning property from GB PRO, general business planned residential overlay to TF PRO, two-family planned residential overlay.
Your Honor, remove the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign.
Second reading of bill number 4724, an ordinance rezoning property from GB PRO, general business planned residential overlay to TF PRO, two-family planned residential overlay.
Your Honor, remove the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call please.
I was unable to make it to the Planning Commission, but I did watch the video. They all make good points and I can understand why they had the split vote, but I think we've had, had some extra, you know, language added in there. Gives me a lot more confidence just to, to go ahead with this, you know. Again, connecting what they're proposing tonight actually has to be built, otherwise to me the zoning needs to go back to the way it was, so.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Councilmember Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levisay?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4879.
Next we have introduction of bill number 4725.
I'll introduce, Your Honor. First reading of bill number 4725, an ordinance approving the amended Eagles Ridge commercial planned residential overlay concept plan.
Your Honor, remove the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign.
Second reading of bill number 4725, an ordinance approving the amended Eagles Ridge commercial planned residential overlay concept plan.
Your Honor, remove the bill be approved on its second final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levisay?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4880.
Next we have a public hearing that was continued to tonight from the January 6th meeting.
And proposed to be moved to the February 3rd. I'll make that motion. I'll make that motion.
Second. So the standing motion is that the proposed, or the, I'm sorry, the public hearing for the rezoning and planned development concept plan for Deer Creek be continued to the February 3rd, 2020 council meeting.
So like you said.
Like you said.
Councilmember Fowler?
Aye.
And seconded by?
Councilmember Edmondson?
Thank you.
Okay, got it now? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries.
Cooking with gas.
We're cooking with gas now. Okay, next we have the introduction reading of bill number 4726.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of bill number 4726, an ordinance accepting a deed for right-of-way from the First Baptist Church of Blue Springs along the north side of Wyatt Road west of State Route 7.
Your Honor, remove the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign.
Second reading of bill number 4726, an ordinance accepting a deed for right-of-way from the First Baptist Church of Blue Springs along the north side of Wyatt Road west of State Route 7.
Your Honor, remove the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call please.
Councilmember Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levisay?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4880.
Next we have a public hearing that was continued to tonight from the January 6th meeting.
And proposed to be moved to the February 3rd. I'll make that motion. I'll make that motion.
Second. So the standing motion is that the proposed, or the, I'm sorry, the public hearing for the rezoning and planned development concept plan for Deer Creek be continued to the February 3rd, 2020 council meeting.
So like you said.
Like you said.
Councilmember Fowler?
Aye.
And seconded by?
Councilmember Edmondson?
Thank you.
Okay, got it now? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries.
Cooking with gas.
We're cooking with gas now. Okay, next we have the introduction reading of bill number 4726.
I'll introduce, Your Honor. First reading of bill number 4726, an ordinance accepting a deed for right-of-way from the First Baptist Church of Blue Springs along the north side of Wyatt Road west of State Route 7.
Your Honor, remove the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Edmondson?
Aye.
Kullpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levisay?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4881.
All right, next we have introduction reading of bill number 4727.
Fowler, introduce, Your Honor. First reading of bill number 4727, an ordinance amending section 505712B4 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to establish guidelines for the appearance in, of new and replacement small cell wireless poles.
Your Honor, remove the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I, I just wanted to clarify, this is the adjustments we're making because of state law. This is not, yeah, this is the, being pushed on us stuff, right? Okay, I just want to make sure.
Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign.
Second reading of bill number 4727, an ordinance amending section 505712B4 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to establish guidelines for the appearance of new and replacement small cell wireless poles.
Your Honor, remove the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levisay?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4882.
That brings us to a couple of presentations tonight. Chief Groat?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Excuse me, I don't have to swear in for?
I want you to duly note.
Where'd you get that?
Uh huh. You had to discuss that later.
Well, thank you, everybody. My name's Jeff Groat. I'm here to talk about the no-tax increase bond issue that the Board of Directors of CJC requested in November. They called for a special election and as all of you know, special elections are held in February and they're held for government only. Once again, it's a no-tax increase. We're asking for $7.5 million. The last time CJC went to the voters and asked for a bond package was in 2016 for several capital projects regarding fire stations and, and apparatus purchase. So this year, we're the only issue on the ballot in February, so we encourage everybody to come vote, but when you go in there, there'll be just one question and it'll be ours. So we have four big ticket items that I wanted to just kind of let everybody know and I've been making the rounds all month, so most of you have already heard my spill already, so if you have multiple times, I apologize, but the biggest ticket item's fire trucks. So we're going to replace, if the bond package passes, we're going to replace three of our aging fire trucks. We have a ladder truck right up here on 40 Highway. It costs a million and a half dollars to replace that one fire truck. The other two are right around $750,000 apiece, so we're looking right around $3 million out of the seven and a half just for three new fire trucks. Currently at CJC, we employ a 10-10 apparatus replacement plan and we keep a fire truck on the front line for 10 years and then we put it in our reserve fleet for 10 years. So if the bond passes, we will actually be auctioning three 20-year-plus fire trucks out of our fleet. We've had them a long time and it's time to see them go. But if you know anybody that needs a fire truck, we're going to put them on blue, purple wave and I would buy one of ours. They're very well-maintained. I'm very proud of the way our firefighters take care of their equipment. The second big-ticket item that I think is of interest to everybody in the community is our storm sirens. So right now, we have a multitude of storm sirens and with these storm sirens, we have, and Chris can attest to this, aging technology on them. The technology on our storm sirens is still Civil Defense Era technology and everybody knows when you talk about storm sirens, first Wednesday of the month at 11 o'clock, if the weather's not bad, you're going to hear these sirens. Well, what a lot of people don't know is we have to send people out to every siren to see if it's working, right? So with this, with this bomb package, we're going to upgrade the technology on them. We're able, going to be able to monitor it from one person's desk and a computer system and we'll be able to tell everything in the world about these sirens, how loud they're emitting noise to how many neighborhoods are reaching, maintenance, power levels. When we have a power breakage, a lot of times, right now, we don't know when, when the power's been broke to one of these sirens, all through construction, you know, community improvements, sometimes the power gets broke and we don't know it until we test them, so we'll know it immediately when that happens. That's the second big-ticket item with the bomb package. The other two items I wanted to talk about is our radio system. So right now, and I think Eric's very attuned to the cost of, and Chief Muns and Chris, cost of our radio system for both the city and CJC to upgrade, it's very sizable. So when you see firefighters, public works employees, firefighters with those radios on the side, they're about $5,000 apiece. So we got to mix and match fleet, very aging, we need to replace about 30 of them. The fourth thing we, we're, we plan on earmarking the money for is firefighter clothing and it's not the clothing and the uniforms like what you see me in, it's their fire protective gear. And most people don't realize how expensive that gear is, so there's a life cycle of 10 years on that and that's an NFPA standard, which came out about six years ago. With that, we're going to take right about a million dollars and replace, everybody gets a new set. And we have some that are 25 years old. I mean, we got some aging firefighter protective clothing, but in one fell swoop, I think we're going to, we're going to increase the health and safety of our firefighters overnight with that. We really contemplated replacing it all, but there's some industry advances technology-wise that we think are coming around the horn in a couple of years and we, I didn't want to be here and they say, well, chief, you just bought all this and there's something better that comes up, so we're going to replace half of it. We have a couple of small capital projects. We got two HVA systems that need to be replaced in two of our fire stations. We have some concrete repair. Fire trucks tend to tear up concrete because they're so heavy, but that's pretty much in a nutshell, the Reader's Digest version of what we plan on doing. Once again, it's a general obligation bond. There's really nothing controversial about it and we, we really appreciate the city's support as a community partner. We enjoy the relationship and be happy to ask, answer any questions if anybody has any.
Questions of Chief? For Chief, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Since I have the jacket.
Yes, sir.
If I bought one of those aged fire trucks, would you throw in a helmet?
I would, sir.
Hey, I'd buy that.
A new parade vehicle?
You probably need one. Yeah, we can, we can work something out.
You know, people buy ambulances and stuff, so you know, buy a fire truck, I'd think I would be unique if I did.
It would, yes.
Okay. Anyway, thank you for that presentation and hopefully people will get out and support it because the things that you described that, that's needed, to protect your firefighters as well as to be able to respond when the sirens are off, people want to be able to go find someplace safe.
Right.
I think they're very noble and needed and hopefully people will get out and support this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. Appreciate you. All right, next we have another presentation and this is going to be on the School of Economics.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Sue Ann Johnson, I'm Executive Director of the School of Economics. I'd also like to introduce other people with our organization. Deila Fullerton is the Board President, Jason Johnston, Program Manager, and Katie Wells, Development and Marketing Manager. Let me see, where are we going here? There we go. We have leased this building from the City of Blue Springs since 1994, just celebrated our 25th anniversary of providing financial education to the elementary school children Most come from that crescent of Kansas, of suburbs on the eastern side of Kansas City, stretching from Liberty and Kearney, you know, right on down in a loop. But you can see that we're also drawing from KCK, rural Missouri, and from private and homeschool groups all over the metro area. These are people who might not otherwise come to Blue Springs, who may never have been to Blue Springs before, but their child's field trip is the incentive for them to come to our area, during which time they're going to see businesses, they might make decisions where to eat, where to shop, or where they could do business in the future. The parents are there to help their child. We provide financial education where the students are taking out a loan from the bank. They have to pay operating expenses for their little business, things like rent and taxes, taxes to a mayor who's probably about this tall. They learn what it takes to be a productive citizen and how to be financially responsible with the money that they earn in the future. Beyond the Blue Springs School District in the top right, there are 32 school districts on the Missouri side who currently attend our facility. These are the statistics from the current school year. 32 districts, 85 different schools coming through town just to come to School of Economics. We're bringing 20 different schools from the Kansas side, they're crossing state line to join us, and private and homeschool groups, 45 different groups. Yesterday, we had a homeschool group, 107 students. Their parents brought them to town, dropped them off. About 15 parents stayed with us, and the remaining set of parents of that group of 107 had four hours to decide what to do in this part of town. So we know that they are bringing business and that we're showing them something that perhaps they might not have seen before if they'd not had another reason to come to Blue Springs. They are helping their students. As they come in, we're thinking these people are driving down 291, 435, they're coming in I-70, they're coming in 40. We give them directions off Woodchapel Road, off 7 Highway, and our staff also gives them directions of where to get other services while they're in town as they're getting ready to leave our facility. Whoops. Here is a list of the groups that are currently attending. So in one school year, these are the people that are coming. They're bringing in an average of 20 parent volunteers with each school group, and you can see the different directions they would be coming from and the different highways or experiences they would have and businesses they would see on the way in based on the diversity of where they come. Some of my favorite are coming from northern Missouri. We've got Green City, La Plata, Marceline. We're bringing them to town for the day, and we're very proud of that. And so what we want to do is to be part of any RFP or any development work that is approved by the city, that is brought in by a private developer. We want to be considered as part of that major plan, and our purpose today is to bring that to the attention of the council, that as you're reviewing the different proposals that may come across your desk, that you consider how the School of Economics might be part of that, either as a standalone building or perhaps part of a multi-purpose unit that if it's proposed to be part commercial and part residential, I believe there's a place for us within that. I'm happy to entertain any questions. We are happy to entertain any questions about School of Economics. We're thankful for those of you who came and helped celebrate the 25th anniversary and those who have served on our Board of Directors over the years. We're here and we're here to stay. And we've got that lease through 2032, and it might look different by the time we get there, but Blue Spring School, the School of Economics is going to be a big part of the Blue Springs downtown area in years to come.
I appreciate your comment and your presentation. I was talking to somebody recently, not from this area, and was praising the School of Economics. I don't remember exactly off the top of my head where they were from, but I was just kind of surprised that they knew about the School of Economics in Blue Springs.
We hear it all over town. When I go shopping with the School of Economics credit card, your children, your grandchildren, they probably have memories of having attended, and it's an experience that people take with them. They can tell us what was their job, what did they do, what did they learn? And sometimes there's a continuation to the story, like, "I earned my first paycheck at School of Economics, and I learned how to manage my money, and now I'm an accountant." Or, "Now I'm a business owner." "I went to the doctor's office today and he said, 'You know, I got this degree to be a doctor, but nobody told me how to run my business.' I wish I had had that when I was a kid." And now he has fifth-grade student who's going to come join us in April. So it's a tradition, it's an institution, and we want to make sure that it stays that way for future generations to be able to attend the School of Economics.
Anyone else any comments? We'll just come right down on that. We'll start there and just come on down.
Thank you, Your Honor. Help me with my memory here a little bit. You said 94, now, when it started, in 94, when the nonprofit took it over?
It has been a nonprofit since 1994. The forming of the nonprofit had resources from the Blue Springs School District and from the city, also major grants from Larry Stewart, if you remember his philanthropic efforts. A lot of people pitched in, including tradespeople, to actually build out the facility. So, yeah, but it has been a standalone nonprofit since 1994.
Do you remember right offhand what year that was when it started?
94.
94.
No, before it was nonprofit, nonprofit.
Before it became a nonprofit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what I recall before the School of Economics, Judy Q. and the Blue Springs Bank was helping out the youth and almost had a similar program, so, but 94 was the first year I recall the School of Economics. What Councilmember Kayler's not saying is he was one of those tradespeople that had that.
Yes, I know that there were a vast number of people that helped build out this site. Now, since you have been there perhaps, we have put on a new roof, so at cost to the nonprofit organization. We've put on a new roof, two new heating and cooling units, one on the roof, one inside. We have replaced both doors, the front door and back door. We've replaced all the windows and upgraded all the electricals. So we've made significant investment in maintaining the facility that is so generously leased to us, and we feel like we've been good stewards of the property.
Yeah, before we go to Councilman Levisay, I'm curious if Councilmember Kayler has his license from the Department of Conservation, because she sure were fishing for that, weren't you?
He delegated it to me, that's how much he was fishing for. Well, I just want to say, I've been on the Board of the School of Economics for several years, and I think Councilman Fowler was before that. And I try not to date myself as often as possible, but I did attend the School of Economics. It wasn't my kids or grandkids. I actually attended, I'm pretty sure I sold donuts, I want to say, was my job. But for those of you that don't know, that haven't been keeping track, what they're doing in the nonprofit world, I know this presentation is very focused on how essential it is to Blue Springs, but what they're doing is exploding the nonprofit world. They're growing hand over fist, creating new programs. They've really just, in the last, really just two or three years, have started brand-new things that nobody else is doing. And there, as Stuann said, they're putting Blue Springs on the map in several ways. So it's a great program, a program I benefited of. Hopefully, they'll be around for my son to benefit from it, and I think it's good for us to keep that in mind as we consider what's the future of downtown looks like, so.
Thank you.
Councilman Fowler.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that, although I didn't hear Councilmember Levisay say he graduated from that.
I did not say that.
Highlight what you mentioned about taking care of the facility. Yes, for 25 years, it's been improved and maintained, brought up to code, so thank you for that. I would like to also echo that any development proposal, really think about School of Economics and think about all the traffic that brings to downtown. I remember years ago when it used to be, when the church had the, probably one of the biggest preschools in the area, Little Angels, and they used to wrap around, you know, pick up and drop off for all the vehicles that came to downtown from that. So to me, a good downtown proposal, yeah, it's got to have all the residential and retail opportunities, but, you know, keeping a strong youth presence in downtown is always good for it.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilmember Erickson.
Well, since you started, I will say that I was actually a volunteer before it was incorporated for a few days, and my children went there before it was incorporated. So I think that dates me.
Yeah, a little bit.
But anyway, it's been a great project, and I think the bank and all that was great. I actually went to JC's meetings there before it even started.
Yes, I've heard of those.
Yeah, I know. That dates me.
Councilmember Edmondson.
I agree with what everyone has said, but that is kind of like a little jewel over